Five thirty-five. Do you guys want to open yours? Oh, sorry. Alright, did you guys have any initial questions about the budget? Or did you want to start from the beginning or work our way through it? Or how do you guys want to?
I think that we just go page by page real quick and if there's any questions and then I just think if we do, then we shouldn't have any big questions.
Okay. So, um, so you see the first page?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah. Page two. Anybody got any question? Comments? When I, the budget committee anyway, when I get to the page, that's the time to say something. There's nothing on two, we'll go to page.
Yep, there's a three.
Yes. Page three.
None?
None? Well, that's kind of history.
Yeah, this is more of informational.
Yeah. Page four?
I do.
Um, on transportation. Page five.
Page five.
Page five? Well, we run for. Privilege over there.
We know your fault.
He's ready to go.
Okay.
First thing is, the special ed transportation, is any of that year round?
We'd assume so because we have extended school year.
Yeah. Yes.
So I, so that number doesn't really hold water for me today, but we talked about the expense of transportation compared to like pool, that's eighty-three hundred dollars a week to operate. Our general, our regular ed transportation is ninety-seven hundred eighty-four dollars a week. Transport, how many kids are using the bus right now?
I'm not sure we can give you an exact number.
No, I'm just saying.
It's a special ed, but.
Not this year, but in the future, if kids aren't using these big buses, I'm still for like, you're like a hundred and thirty-five thousand brand new, pretty small. Why don't we just go in-house and do it ourselves? Three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars a year.
I know that for special ed transportation specifically, we're looking into regionalizing with other schools to share those costs. So hopefully in the future, we'll be able to work that out.
But generally, isn't that most small, right?
The transportation?
Yeah. Three eighty-eight to four oh eight. So it's not like it's a huge difference? You know, right now, if the regular school year was, was all the special ed transportation in house, it would be like eleven-three a week. So that's a ton of money.
It also specializes for some students.
I understand that.
It is expensive.
But I just think it's worth, you know, investigating or looking into.
Didn't, didn't we talk about this at the last meeting, Dan? They said something about the, the certifications are a pain and, and keeping employees. I think Jane did discuss that.
Taxes are a pain.
Well, no, I, I, I mean, I'm just saying. I mean, I've been with you, taxes are a pain.
But I'm just, you know, you think about it and like I say, it's not going to happen.
Yeah.
You know, then you can roll together. But, you know, I know like some schools in Massachusetts, like custodians, like the morning ones, the day shift, come in early for buses, make extra money doing the buses. And then the afternoon ones come in early through the afternoon buses and they make extra money that way for the general ed. Special ed's another issue, I understand that, but, you know, I just, it's other things that happen in other places. To me, it's, it's worth looking into for that kind of money. That's all I got on that. Yes, as far as facilities and maintenance, any big projects coming up in the next, you know, three, four, five years, like replacing any of the stuff on roof, roof itself, big maintenance items that are going to be?
Well, we, I, we are going to be looking into doing some stuff. Yes, I don't have anything in front of me. I, I, being new here, they kind of put it off for this year so that I could get my feet wet and get into it. But I do have some, I do have some ideas to move forward with some, um, some facility stuff, yes. It's a, you know, large amount of different things could be. But as time goes on, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, audit certain things that, you know, what we could do moving forward to just do some upgrades and some updating of the stuff that we do have.
And I'm not, not trying to catch you on anybody on anything, it's just, now it's almost paid off, it's been quite a while, right? Stuff's starting to get aged and I didn't know if there was something rare in its ugly head that you guys are like band-aid and you keep rolling. You can say, well, this is going to have to be fixed in the next two, three years.
No, yeah, it's, it's, it's on my radar that there's, there is some things that we need to look into for sure. And I am, you know, I'm in the process right now of, you know, looking at some of those things moving forward to replace or, or, you know, other things, but it's, yeah, I, I, they're on my radar as well.
Alright, so nothing, nothing glaring right now that you know.
And that's part of the strategic plan?
Yep.
Process is figuring that out so we don't end up blindsided with anything and we have to think they're looking at a ten-year plan?
Yeah, there's something. With a capital improvement plan.
Yeah.
What you said last? Page seven?
So you'll see that the high school will be, this next, that will be the final. And for the high school, so it will be nice to have that done.
That'll be nice. Okay, eight? You think on the salary benefits?
Yep. This is the, this is the handout that Jane gave us last year. In the five-year, we were looking at benefits increase of thirty-three point five percent. This is, this is from the handout from last year, not current. This year, we're looking at twenty-six point one. So I, I think that's a good trend to see that going down. And the, uh, the total was thirteen point zero nine percent increase in a five-year change and now we're twelve point eleven. But I'm concerned about the, the amount of the increase because I had notes in here from last year that this was increasing. Push it up to ten years, we're looking at a fifty percent increase, which kind of is what's shown here as well. That's.
I don't know if Jane can speak to that because she's, she's online.
I can speak to this a little bit. Um, the last five years, obviously I chopped a year off because we're one year further. So we are looking at a better number, but as you know, with an increase of twenty-five percent last year to our health insurance, that was pretty devastating. We did go out to bid because we were doing whatever we could to try and, and save money. And the other company that we went out to bid said they would probably charge the same or higher as an increase. Our, our rating is, is not very good, we have a high claims history. So until we can get the claims under control, it's going to continue. This year, what they did is there are two plans that will be continuing and so one went up eleven point one percent and the other one out twelve point six percent. So depending on what plan the employee has elected, there's different rates of increase on those. Could you guys hear all that?
Yes.
Yes.
Jane, what's the, what do you think the projection is for two years for the benefit?
Two years?
Yeah.
Um, you know what, Ken, if, if I had a choice, I would think maybe we're looking more at an eight or nine percent increase each of the next two years. I hate to say that, but I, I think it's going to come down a little bit.
Somebody else? How many, how many, how many, um, companies under the two from the answer for insurance?
Any companies offer insurance to someone like us?
Yes.
Uh, there's typically about three. There's a local government or what used to be called the LGC, it's now called Health Trust. There is school care and there is New Hampshire Interlocal Trust. Um, they're really about the only three, um, unless we do a self-funding type thing that are really up to what we have as far as the needs that we have.
Anything else?
Anybody got anything else?
It's hard for me to see. You tell me who's attending online just so I have it written down.
Karen Thompson, Jane Fortson, David Ryan, Anna Roth, and Patty Wallace.
Awesome, thank you. The only other question I actually have on seeing that we're on this page of the salary is, we got handed out, Jane, can you see that's?
No, I can't, Ken.
This, this is the, this is the salary study breakdown with all the, with all the different individuals and what lines their money was coming from.
Uh, is this the one that was in the back of each bill, uh, each, um, building, like the elementary school and then the high school? Is this our breakdown that I gave you?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
From you and this was each individual position. Is, can, is it possible to get one of these currently so that I can keep track of it? I mean, I'm sure the rest of the members want to also, if anybody wants to see this, this is the one that we got last year. If anybody wants to see this, I'll hand it.
Closest last year's.
Yeah, this is, this is the one from last year because I haven't seen one for this year.
Um, all the wage information is in the back of each section, so under the elementary school, all the wages are there for everybody in that building and so forth?
Each section.
Then it includes, like what Kenny has includes any, any extra critos they do coaching?
Yeah.
Oh.
Every, every single employee that's getting paid by the school, whether it's a coach or not, all the way up through to the top tier is in this breakdown. Do you want to see this?
I'll get a, we'll get a new one if she's going to give them.
I have it at home.
Okay.
Thank you though. Or actually, I have it probably in here. I do, I may have it in my, in my book.
So Jane, is that something you can get them for this year?
I think so. I mean, if, if they haven't been issued a stipend this year, then you're not going to see that. Say it's a spring sport, we haven't, we haven't done those yet, so you wouldn't see anything for those.
Hey, one other question, Jane, you said that you, you were thinking about eight percent overall in the next couple of years?
As far as benefits, yeah, I'm hoping that slows down a, a little bit and goes back to where it was a couple of years ago.
Okay, so that gives the benefit portion?
Yeah, it's just the benefit. Now wages, as you know, um, we have in the, um, support staff unit, we just approved their contract in the spring, so they're in their first year of the contract. What you see outlined in the wage pages behind each section is, represents year two, which it would be the twenty-five, twenty-six year of the contract. The teachers' wages have no increase in them because those will be brought forth to you if we reach an agreement, um, those will come in a warrant article. So any teacher increases are not there. And as of now, any district-wide staff that don't belong or an SAU staff that are not incorporated into collective bargaining are at a zero percent increase.
Okay. That's what I thought you wanted to check, thank you. Can you bring more on that maybe?
No, I just, I understand how he did it because you can't, there's no number to put there.
Right.
Just, you necessarily anticipate something, so.
Well, it's hard to think of the teachers because they're still negotiating.
You mean, you know, it's like insurance, you pick a number when you, when you budget for insurance, like you tell us and that makes sense because now you've got at least some type of cost in there. Right now, unless, unless you guys don't settle, there's going to be changes, it could be three, three, four percent, who knows what to keep on that line, so.
If you put, if you put a number in there, you can be charged with bargaining that day. You, you can't. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I know, but you can, don't, you know, it's a bargain at that day.
No, but you can't throw a number out there and then negotiate.
I mean, no, no, I mean, hopefully, hopefully, we'll know, we'll be able to give you those numbers again. Hopefully, if they're done.
Definitely by town.
Yes.
Well, you have a public hearing. You have a public hearing.
Yeah, so by then we have to.
Yeah.
Or if you don't, then it's going to come to voters as a one another one. A medium-sized number. Good as you guys have done on this budget, it's, it's, take it, take it in advance. They don't deserve.
Right, yeah.
It's just, it'd be nice to have it.
Yeah.
Well, sir?
Yes.
All right, page nine. See, I'll let you see. Summary for the budget. That's the page.
So many questions on the annual school budget as a whole?
Other guy?
Well, I'm just going to go through here.
No, we're talking, talking about page eleven, ten, eleven, and twelve. Good, Daniel? Anybody else?
Is the actual budget for the, of the sixteen? Yeah.
If you're sick, get away. You're talking like someone's gone. My life must have gone out the other way.
Depending on what they are, Jane, I couldn't remember what you told us.
What page is that?
Uh, twelve. We, um, hundred percent down in the art, first line.
Yep.
That was the artist, I believe.
Yeah.
And so that is something that's been looked at in other ways. And Jane, I don't know if you're at that, that's, we've gotten different events through Tuft Grant or through other grants, not required for, or.
I know PTA is paid for it sometimes and, you know, so.
Okay, I just couldn't remember. I know it's just something, it just, it didn't seem like it needed to be in the local budget.
Medical ed, I can't remember correctly. Have one less position there.
This is a elementary school, not in the high school. This is the elementary school.
The elementary.
Yeah, this is just the elementary. And we only have one PE teacher in elementary.
Okay.
It's just surprising. That was based on, um, request this next year.
Page thirteen?
Yeah, so, thirteen under the reading, is that like something new?
Yeah, so, um, we have our, our minimum standard in the state and one of them is to have a reading specialist. Um, and that's not a position we've had. This year, we hired an MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support, um, reading intervention coordinator from Title One, um, as, as a pilot to understand and create our system. Um, and so next year, she, half her salary will come to the local budget so that we're leading the minimum requirements and half will remain on title as the coordinator.
No, no, we got our, I don't, I'm getting out of my guidance. Um, did we go to one and a half or something?
On page fourteen?
Yeah.
Those are just supplies.
That's what says.
Oh, sorry, son. Jane, it's a salary question.
Whoops, on which one?
I, guidance salaries, page fourteen, down.
Yes. That's why that went down?
Yes.
Yes, so, um, last year, we put the, um, our dean of students, I, I'm not good with, with the, the position is, but anyway, Karen Thompson, um, has been allocated between the middle school, high school, and the elementary school. So last year, we had decided to do, I think, a sixty, forty split. This year, it's more realistic to say it's seventy, thirty. So we wanted it to be more realistic. So you're going to see a corresponding increase over in the high school. Where this decreases, it increases there, it's just a matter of moving the lines to better allocate or make it a little more accurate.
Well, sir, folks, one fifteen. Sixteen and lighter cost? No, back on fifteen, you got a question, Karen?
Under administration supply, administration elementary?
Yes.
Never mind.
I like that.
Sixteen? Well, sir? Page seventeen?
So timeframe for filling the two vacancies I'm seeing, or is there only one vacancy left?
It's only one now, right? The one in red is the reduction.
Right, but I'm seeing two vacancies and you reduced one.
Yeah.
One's been filled already?
I'm looking at that right now because that's, that wasn't. Uh, so that, Jane, I believe that the other vacancy was grade two and that's been filled?
Yeah, what, um, what we had is, I had it as grade one. Um, so what you're going to see is you'll see the vacancy BA five, grade one, and that's in there, but then you're going to see the red lines, which is taking it out. So basically, it's saying, you know, that position's not included in there anymore. So that was the reduction of a position that currently is unfilled.
Okay. I understand that.
So they cancel each other out?
Yeah.
But we're missing, are we missing a grade two teacher on here, Jane? We have two grade two teachers.
It might be how they're allocated because where they switch, I don't always, we don't always get the switch. So whatever comes in our system may not necessarily have gotten switched.
So her, her, her name and grade aren't here, that's right.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I only see one grade two.
Well, the, the, the third, third line down says BA two, the same as the first line, which is BA two, grade two. So maybe it's just a typo on grade one, grade two?
That's the bachelor's step two level, so that's the step.
So, is there three grade threes?
Yeah.
Because on this report, there's three of them.
Uh, there's three grades four, so that, so like Mary Wisman, grade three, she's at actually grade four this year, so there's three grade fours. Um, I'm just wondering, Jane, if that vacancy grade one was the vacancy that was in second grade that has been filled?
It may very well be.
Okay, that, that.
We had quite a few.
All of this, so.
Yeah, we had people move around there.
Um, and then the red is that we're taking out a position.
That makes sense.
So the salary numbers are accurate, do they?
I think there's one, maybe one error, that's what I'm wondering.
Just as far as the grade, but not the numbers?
Um, so that vacancy BA level five? Um, that's not, we filled it with a BA one?
Right, but what, what we've done is when there's a vacancy, if we were going to rehire that vacancy, I would have moved it to a master six, where the outgoing person was a BA five. Rather than moving it, I just subtracted the BA five because we knew that was going to be the position leaving, rather than go to the effort of increasing it and then just taking it out again.
Then we're missing somebody.
Yeah, Jane, she's, she's saying she doesn't see the teacher's name that is in grade three actually on here.
She's two. You're going to have to go through and let me know who's not there because I, I don't have eyes in the school, sorry.
Um, do you want me to say?
Pardon?
Do you want me to say?
Sure.
Their name would be on here otherwise.
It's Ms. Newman who replaced Mr. Pyon, who's not on here, that's why I was thinking he was the vacancy.
Mr. Newman, grade two.
So that means we're technically, there'd be another.
Yeah, so we're going to have another vacancy that, that is filled, so, yeah, this number's going to go up.
She's a BA one now, so.
But overall, overall, we are going down one teaching position, I want to be clear about that.
Yeah.
So we had budgeted for three fifth grade, well, a, a third, originally it was a third first grade, we didn't have the enrollment, our enrollment ballooned at fifth. So we posted for a third fifth this year. That didn't get filled, so we're not filling it this year and, um, that grade's moving on, um, so we're not filling it for next year. So we're cutting one position that was in the budget that currently is unfilled and we're not filling it. But we are cutting by one teacher.
But you, but you added the reading specialist.
Half of her salary, which we would have had anyways to meet her minimum standard.
So how many first grade teachers do you actually?
This year, we have two. Next year, we would, next year's plan, based on our numbers, but again, this summer, our numbers, you know, achieved. So based on our, our numbers this coming year, we'll have three kindergartens, three first grades, and two of every other section.
So just looking at this, when you come down to, you got your two vacant positions, one's in red because it's gone. The other one that's in the black that has a salary attached to it, is that close to what you would be paying that person that took the second grade spot?
It's actually a little bit more, she, she came in under that.
So, so, so this, this vacant position is actually filled by that second grade.
That's what I believe, yeah.
So our numbers won't go up big because if this number is bigger than what you hired, it should go down then, right?
No, they're going to go up. She took that.
She had it there.
I don't think she did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, sorry about that.
I just want to go back to this, that's why we want, why I want this.
Yeah.
It just, it just lumps everything together as far as the employment goes and it's a little circular, I think.
I have one question. I don't want to sound weird, but what's the off step, Jane? Does that mean they're beyond any step that's in that position?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
They've been here a while. And in the contract, there's a certain money attached to being off.
So there's going to be an increase in this salary line of the forty-seven.
Six.
Forty-seven, six fifty.
Okay. Next page eighteen, she's a, she's a BA, forty-seven, six fifty. Her, that should be her salary and then everything else is going to double it. Okay.
Jane, figure it out, get a shift, she's.
I'm doing it right now.
You guys are on the same page.
Oh, is, is he doing it too?
I know, I was like, we could.
Doesn't equal that number. Well, mine came off a little wrong, so I don't know what I just messed up on. I'm off by a teeny tiny bit.
No, but I was just, I was just doing this one, yeah, just the one budget, but I, what do you have?
I'm still adding things up.
I, I, I don't know what I did wrong.
I think we ought to just wait for Jane to.
Yeah, I can give you.
We're gonna have to have new stuff anyway.
I can give you your new number for the salary.
Okay.
One million forty nine thousand four hundred and thirty-four.
That's. Say it again, Jane.
Yeah, one million forty nine thousand four hundred and thirty-four. So one zero four nine four three four.
Salary, that's a budget salary line.
About the forty six thousand one hundred eighty-two.
Your FICA.
Forty six thousand.
FICA has increased to eighty thousand two hundred and eighty-two. New Hampshire Retirement is one ninety-five, five thirteen. And Health and Dental, I've got to see if I can get my system open. It wasn't opening earlier. I don't know if it's, whether or not. Eighty thousand two eighty-two.
Two eighty-two.
Two eighty-two.
Two eighty-two. Yeah.
I got, I got a question.
Yeah, the, the Health and Dental number, I'll have to get back to you. I can't seem to open my accounting system right now. I don't know why.
Clarify that salary. You're gonna add forty seven, six fifty into the one million three thousand five hundred thirty-four, right? She did that.
Yeah.
Maybe that number is wrong, according to my calculator, but I got one million fifty-one, I think she said one million forty-nine.
So I think the forty seven, six fifty is a step two?
Yeah.
She's not, she's, okay, all right.
It's a forty five thousand nine hundred dollars.
All right, just want to make sure my number.
So this should be everyone's step for next year.
What's the range for BA one?
It's a BA zero, I believe she is, according to what I have.
So she'd be a one next year.
And what is that? What is that?
Forty five thousand nine hundred, Ken.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nineteen.
Well, I wanted to change two, right? Let's all add together.
Well, good with that, folks? Twenty-one, twenty-two?
Twenty-one, I got a question, and I'm sure it's just the way I'm reading it, and I've got myself a bunch of buttons. So this is confusing. It says a decrease in wage is due to position budgeted at MA six. It's MA thirty half step, so the person who has it is Masters thirty.
Yes.
Half step.
Half step, so wouldn't that number be higher? Than the MA Masters with six?
Jane.
Yep, I can answer that. So when you're looking at your guidance salaries, remember you have, there's, there are two pieces going on. One is, as I spoke to earlier, in the elementary school, there's the reallocation. So there's additional ten percent being reallocated over to here, where you saw it go down in the elementary school. It's coming up here, the same amount. And then you have two people currently that are at a Masters thirty, and they are a total of one person. So we have a point six and a point four.
That's the two part-time positions.
Sorry, next year, we're gonna have one full-time person. Okay, so the, the increase you're seeing here is the reallocation from the elementary school that you saw earlier, and then it's offset with a decrease because Masters thirty down to what I budgeted as a Master six would give you a decrease, but it's that offsetting allocation that you saw, that I think was like nine thousand something.
Oh, no, it just wasn't making sense to me the way it was all worded. I thought we had a full-time position, then there was two part-time positions I wasn't sure where it was coming from. We budgeted for a Masters with thirty. And I wasn't realizing there was two part-time positions filling one. That's what my confusion was.
Now, and, and Dan, the other piece of that too is, to go on a little bit further, because I kind of combined it. Two part-time people don't qualify for benefits, but a full-time person will, so you'll see a related increase in the benefits.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
Dumb question, may not be dumb. What, what's OSTCP grant for the supplies on the ELO?
I'm gonna let Karen do that one.
Yeah, what, what is, what is that definition of that grant? What is the OSTCP?
Hi, Ken, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, yeah, the OSTCP stands for Out-of-School-Time Career Pathways Grant, and that's a grant we received four years ago of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that supports all kinds of activities on pre-K through twelve. So that grant, we get an allocation of fifty thousand dollars each year, and it's mostly STEM or STEAM related, although not completely. So that's where a lot of our science and math activities and field trips have been able to come from.
Okay. Thank you for the definition.
One minute? Page twenty-three?
Oh, it is just, just a question. It's like it's out of place. The professional services tutoring? Don't see a white one. What it is, the green, so it's new. Is that in the wrong spot?
I think it was moved from where it originally was.
What happened with that is because the twenty-three, twenty-four, we actually had expenditures hit that line. And we hadn't had that line before. I mean, we did like way, way back. I had to allocate or put it in there because it was actually expended from last year. Whenever someone has to have either professional services or home tutoring, that would go in there because it's not a special ed cost. It's a regular ed cost and it's an instruction cost, so it would go there. So I had to, as you can see, there's nothing budgeted for it at this point, but because we did have twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year expenditures, I had to include it, otherwise my budgets wouldn't equal.
Twenty-three.
Then on the same page, the in-school suspension for fifty dollars, is that just a placeholder in case you've got a budget for somebody?
Um, yeah, those are more placeholders in case they need it, but nothing's been expended out of it over the last several years. But it has been budgeted each year. It's just when it's not expended, when you're looking at the actual, you keep seeing zeros.
Thank you.
Anybody got anything else?
Oh, sorry. So music, music. And if we're being more involved, that's great, but it went from, you know, up a grand sixteen hundred, now we're up to five thousand this year for supplies. Losing fees going up as well. And I, I'm a full supporter of all that stuff. I just wonder what the big changes were. Three band members last year.
Yeah, we have a huge band now.
Okay, all right, that's perfect. Glad to hear. Thank you.
Could we get a number on how many people in band?
A lot.
There's about forty at the elementary school. So, and they're heading out.
Yeah, no, they, they, we just went to their concert and, oh my God, it jam-packed. I mean, I don't even know, there's, it seems like fifty kids.
There's a lot of kids there.
I went on the field trip and I think there was fifty kids on the field trip. Yeah, and it was amazing, yep. Lots, lots of interest now.
Yeah, the feeder program that we started in the elementary schools some years back is starting to, now it's starting to come up into the, yeah.
And, and the teachers are amazing. So good.
One more, twenty-four.
Um, special education, teacher salaries, is that because of the negotiations or that salary hasn't changed in the budget? The two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and three, two hundred thousand, two hundred dollars? Not because you're in negotiations, that's coming into that contract?
That number is, it's flat, so that two hundred and three thousand two hundred is what we have for the five special ed teachers at the middle school, high school, and that number staying the same as we move forward until negotiations are done. Then if we reach negotiations, you know, come up with a number, that would then increase when you look at it in next year's budget. For, for now, it's flat. And so you would see the employees that totaled that number in those wage sheets.
Right.
Anyone else? Forty-five?
Or stipend, after this retirement's attached to the stipend.
Some of our, I'm assuming some of those are teacher stipends, right?
That could go to anybody. I mean, I just wonder, it's a stipend, it's not your job, it's extra money. So I just wonder why retirement is attached, attached to that. It seems like it's just extra money you shouldn't spend, or does it qualify, right?
Is, is that for retirement you're questioning?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, what happens with retirement is depending on where you are in the vesting cycle. And there's, there's like three different levels that have happened, just been so lovely over the last fifteen years of New Hampshire Retirement, that some people, when you have co-curricular stipend, these are more educational stipends or, or non-sport stipends, there is New Hampshire Retirement attached to it, depending on where you are in your vesting.
Well, they, they got it for non-teacher retirement athletics as well.
Yes, so non-teacher retirement athletics, you're gonna have, some of that is going to be your athletic director because he does receive New Hampshire Retirement, so too will his athletic director wages, plus any of our teachers or non-teachers. We do have support staff that also do quite a bit of the coaching. In fact, I would say more of it than I think any of our teachers. So if they are New Hampshire Retirement eligible, that would be applied as well. However, in, in this case, there are very few that are teacher retirement eligible. Unless you're already a full-time person.
All right, and Maria had something to say.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm getting messages that people are having a hard time hearing us, so I just want to make sure everyone has their microphone on. Because I don't know if that will explain. I'm sorry, I didn't say when we started.
There you go, now you can hear Dan.
Sorry about that.
No, I'm sorry, I should have reminded you, but thanks. We'll see if that helps.
Okay, anybody else got any questions? Page twenty-five? Down here, any? Page twenty-seven? I guess. Twenty-eight, middle high school. The five-six wages. Again, not hearing anything? On page thirty.
We talked about it at the last meeting about the shared tech. Can we get another explanation on that, just for clarification?
Sure. Dr. Ryan, would you like me to talk or speak to that?
Yeah, Justin, if you want to go ahead and explain that, and if we need to talk financials, Jane can break that down for him.
Okay, so starting next year, we're gonna be trying to share services with the IG department for Enzo and Winchester. And I believe the split is close to a we come up with fifty-six percent here and thirty-three percent Winchester. So my salary is gonna be shared between the two districts. So mine on ours on the Enzo sheets, it goes down, and then they'll have to increase on the upside.
So that's all in place and approved and?
That's about, I'm, I'm not sure about, Dr. Ryan might be able to answer that a little bit more. I'm not sure.
That is, yeah, that's, so that's, that's part of the budget in Winchester as well. That's being discussed, the budget committee for a second time tomorrow night. But there hasn't been any questions about it, and the board is in full support of it as well.
Does, does that include any equipment at all? That's just strictly?
Just manpower right now.
Yeah. Or using your assistants or whatever, I don't know.
I think right now it's just my salary. If, there's someone already over there, finance support, well, we're replacing their contractor that they're paying for overseas, the department budgeting, purchasing all that. I'm going to be doing that for them. I'm going to be doing that for them, and they're still gonna have their support person.
Page thirty-three? Thirty-four? Eight, thirty-six? Whether there be any questions there? Thirty-seven? Building and grounds, forty-five, six, opposed. Definitely decrease of fifty-eight thousand four ninety-seven. Go on. Thirty-eight?
Decrease.
Sorry?
Decrease.
Decrease. No questions on thirty-eight? Thirty-nine?
Can you guys, um, just talk about the charter school services a little bit? I'm not, you know, I just.
What it is, is that for a special ed student that attends a charter school, we need to pay for special ed services at that charter school. And that's a state mandate.
Okay, Mucks?
Thank you.
Any other questions on thirty-nine? Forty?
I don't damn bring it up to transportation, I've spent quite a bit. But I had a thought to maybe run by everybody. The places that you transport the kids to, do they possibly have transportation services that we're not using? I mean, I don't, we don't know where they're going, obviously, we don't have elaboration on it, but if they're going to another school or another district that might have transportation services, is, you know, is it a possibility to look at that and say, hey, we're sending the kid to you, you're getting money from us, we want to cut rate and we want you to pick the kid up?
If we're talking special ed, then no, none of them have their own transportation. There is one school that does do transportation, but it's only in that state and it's an out-of-state. But that, that's, that's the only one that has their, kind of their own transportation.
Gets a little dicey too, when you talk about the transportation for the kids and what our requirements are. What are we required to transport them both ways?
For sure. Yes, yes. It's part of the free and appropriate education if we're, if we are placing them in an out-of, this is for, just for special ed. If we're placing them in an out-of-district placement, then we are, then we are mandated to have that in the IEP, which is a legal document, so we would have to pay for that.
Ken, I will add that Patty and her team always looks for buddy rides as well. So she consults with a listserv of other special ed directors from other districts in our surrounding area to see if they have students going to the same school, and so we always look to try to split up the cost of that ride.
Anything more on forty?
Just a comment, I mean, I don't, I don't think that there's much that we can do, I was just trying to, you know, think about other options, if there is possibility, I mean, it's, let's say ten grand is, you know, something a little different, if they, if, wherever we go, they have transportation available, they'll go for, you know, five thousand or ten thousand less, that, that's all I was just bringing up, I mean, I, it's not a, I'm not trying to attack it by any means.
No. Any other, Karen?
Um, under their curriculum salaries, I'm, we searched it a little bit better, but it just popped out at me. Really not understanding where I would find, um,
No.
Just the increase due to grant allocation change, changes to two twenty-five, twenty-six. I guess I want to know what part of the budget, the rest of the curriculum stuff is in.
So there'll be the number next to it, should correspond to the line item it's talking about. Okay. So if you take that one hundred to twelve, and look at the line item, two, twelve, other curriculum. You'll see that there. If that helps. Yeah.
Okay.
Get it up later.
Yep. Yo, everybody set? Let's go to forty-one, please. I have a question, line one hundred twenty-four. Five eleven hundred twenty. There is ninety-seven thousand four sixty-four, there's no explanation for anything on the line to the right of that.
All of that falls into the retirement, retirement's coming this year.
Okay, so that, so that ninety-seven thousand is, uh, retirement stipends?
Yes, I can explain that one. That one, if I, if I'm looking right, you're looking at one hundred dot twenty-four hundred dot fifty-one, one hundred?
Yeah.
Page forty-one, yeah, so, um, last year or current year, cause you know, I have to figure what year we're, we're in. Twenty-four, twenty-five, nobody asked to retire at the end of this year. So it was actually zero. So with no retirees this current year, that number zeroed out. Next year, we have six potential retirees, four qualify for this payout. Two have not been with the district long enough to qualify. So those four people, um, the, the wage portion is ninety-seven, four sixty-four. The, um, FICA portion is seven thousand four fifty-six, and the New Hampshire retirement portion is eighteen thousand seven forty-two. And so this, this is the group that makes the largest increase in the SAU slash district-wide budget. And it's for teachers retiring.
What, what could be the total on those three lines?
Uh, hang on one second, it's in the budget.
It's in the, it's on page forty-six. Yeah. And it's the third.
Hundred and twenty-three.
Hundred and twenty-six.
Sixty-two.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else on anything on forty-one? Forty-two? I don't know why you have a question. Forty-three?
Just want to point out, you'll see the green line there, second one down in the budget, charter school special ed services that you asked about earlier. Those are not new costs, but Patty and I had discussed the fact that prior to this, it had always been called tuition, and it's not tuition, it's services provided. So we have basically added a new line because it needs to reflect what it really is, and it's not tuition. It is special ed services provided. So that's why you see it as a new line there, but you'll see a corresponding reduction under the tuition sped public line as well, so.
So I guess my, my question on it now is, is the, the charter school, is that like open to any student who's wishing to go there?
Yes.
Is this strictly special ed charter school?
No, it's a, it's a, a public charter school. So like, uh, an example around this area is MC Square, Gathering Waters up in Keene, um, Surrey Village Charter School, those are all kind of charter, the charter schools that are around this area.
Patty, you know the tuitions to that off the top of your head or close?
I have no idea. We don't pay for the tuition for it, so I, I don't know. We just pay for, we, we just do the special ed cost.
Charter schools don't have a tuition, they're publicly funded through the Department of Education, and that's where some of our adequacy money will go to when a student leaves us to go to a charter school, and they're eligible to go to any charter school in the state of New Hampshire at no cost.
How about transportation?
They have to provide their own transportation.
Thank God for that.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm gonna interrupt you, cause I just got.
What's the matter, you just woke up, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay.
Somebody retired. Page thirty-eight.
Okay. Oh, you are me here?
Yep. Yeah, I just, I, some questions. Certainly, your director, um, and the budgeted salary for that individual, I notice is up almost thirty-five hundred from last, last year. And I have one other question, I know we probably know what the answer says, district-wide, off to the side, and I'm assuming the district is just Kingsdale, Paul of School Street. That's what district-wide means, correct?
Yes.
So all of the buildings, including the SAU building, Ball Field Buildings, all of that, no?
No. Okay, no, that's down, that's all.
Mike, you just brought a good point to kind of raise a question in my mind, looking at the budgets from last year. All, all three of the, the director, maintenance technician, custodian, two, and those are the only three I'm looking at. They all increased in salary line. Is that part of the bargaining, or is that just for the teachers?
Yeah, they're in the bargaining, you just got to support staff.
Which we did last year. So that's,
Custodians are in the bargaining.
This is up because of the bargaining.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ken, the custodians are bargaining. Your facilities director is up, and, and this is a contingency. We are, our facilities director is taking the New Hampshire ASBO facilities director certification courses. So upon passing those, he would, um, if he passes both courses, or not both courses, or several courses, but both levels, he would go up to eighty-five thousand. He currently does not make that. And it's, it was part of the hiring contract with him, because we wanted him to be certified for school district. Yeah, the maintenance technician went up the, I believe it was three percent, that all SAU slash district-wide employees went up last year.
Okay, anybody else? That was, uh, page thirty-two?
Thirty-eight?
I mean, thirty, yeah.
Are you good, Mike?
He's old, he's my break.
Was it, yeah.
Okay.
Mentally, no.
I mean, it looks like a big nut, but if you look at the money that's been passed around the town the last few years, you guys haven't said a word about any of that. So, I mean, fair is fair, my word, my opinion.
Well, but this is also contracted, and there's not much we can do about it.
Make them argue better when they go to.
They are arguing for more money.
Okay, we all set on thirty, on forty-three?
Forty-three, eight?
Three.
All right.
Any more questions?
I got a question on page two.
No more, rip off. What's that?
You want to go to two?
No.
Michael? I can pretend I don't hear you.
Oh.
Okay, page forty-four. Nothing, let's go to forty-five then.
Purchased services?
Yeah.
On the SAU? Just a clarification on that for the thirty-six percent increase.
Yep, that is for the SRO. And when you looked at the explanation pages, there was one standing out in yellow. I've requested the information for next year for our SRO person, I've yet to receive it. So I'm having to go with, with my best estimate based on the last year. So until I can get real information, I, I can't really do much with it, but that's our SRO services.
And Jane, I do believe next year's SRO is gonna be a, uh, that person's salary is lower, correct?
Yes. That's what I'm told.
There's a lower level.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's going to Josh.
He's not branding it.
No, no.
I hear he's very cold.
Anything more on forty-five?
No, sir.
Forty-seven. Trying to hurry up to have another meeting in twenty minutes, I can make it. Oh, well, okay. Page forty-six. Nothing? Forty-seven? Part of the capo, right in front of me.
That was the old man.
Holy shit, that is close. I don't know what the hell was different to happen. I'm not going there either. Math is math. Forty-eight? Two and two is four, and I'm high over that.
By God, it is.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything more on forty-eight? Forty-nine?
So I got one on, on, uh, on forty, oh, a couple. So, the grant covered positions? Forty-eight, I'm sorry.
Forty-nine.
I missed it. Yeah, you did.
I just, is this like ongoing grants? Are these gonna be, look to be paid for by the time? Just keep rolling along, right?
Yeah.
And the HASP director?
That's the Twenty-First Century Grant, that we apply for every five weeks. So we just, we just applied for it, I think, last year, right? Yeah, we got accepted for it last year, so we have another good, I think, five years, I think it's five years.
Okay, I just, one of those things, I'm gonna lose track of it, cause remember last year, the bubble that you guys took there, cause you know, positions you're trying to add in, just gotta make sure everybody understands what's gonna happen at the end of the grant.
Yeah, these grants are ongoing, yeah. They don't disappear.
Okay, so those, those grants don't disappear, that's something you can,
Yeah, yeah, we've had those for years.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay?
I'm perfect.
You good?
Thank you.
Forty-nine?
Yes, please. If nothing hurt. We're getting close.
Yeah.
So this is just, I haven't heard anything on fifty, so we're going on fifty-one.
These are like information sheets at this time.
That's how beautiful you look, it follows Dan.
Oh. Lovely.
Fifty-two? Spendable trust fund balances? Income explanation just quit, so everybody knows that.
Your, um, your balances are, are in two different pieces, it has to do with how it's invested, so. So when I pull these off, I pull them off our broker sheets. So at the time I pull them off is what, what you're basically seeing, um, what's in the income balance. So.
Very good. Well said.
It's all expendable, just so you know.
Yeah, yeah. Fifty-four, anything there?
I just did want to explain on fifty-four, when I get the state number, I will put that in.
Okay.
I didn't really drop to zero. I just don't.
Fifty-five, we good? Fifty-six. Fifty-seven.
Let's start back at one. He's like page sixteen.
From the budget committee, anything, any question you wanna ask? Now's the time.
So I just wanna circle back to our conversation we had last week. And again, not trying to pick on it, but I just wanna see if there was any discussion or if there was a room for discussion. Again, in reference to looking at the special ed budget overall, and I know again, our hands are tied generally with some of that. But with it increasing over the last few years. What I have, increasing to, what was it, thirty-six percent versus thirty percent of the overall budget from twenty-one to twenty-two to twenty-five, twenty-six. You know, with, with the large increase that we're continuously seeing on that. Do we know if there's availability to have any discussion, just as a, to get a third-party analysis? Review of our current, um, program and make sure that we're. We're, we're adhering to everything and we're working in a good fiscal nature to maintain that budget or control that in any way, shape or form.
Dr. Ryan or Patty, wanna answer that?
So I know I brought it up with Jan last week and with our group last week, but I just wanted to know if there was any discussion or if there's any availability for that, just because, again, watching that number grow up and watching the amount that special ed is consuming more and more every year, that is, you know. It, it, it shows that we have more of our money going out towards that area. Than we do going to others and other, other parts of the budget are shrinking due to that. And again, with, with seeing special ed being, um, more costly than it is for elementary school to be run right now. You, you know, or for you, for the high school to be run. I, I would just. I, I feel like I'd be remiss to not address it again and see if there's any kind of third-party evaluations we could get or third-party, uh, cost evaluations completed to, to just to ensure that. You know, we're doing everything we can, but we're also being as fiscally sound as we can be on that to control that.
Alex, what are you looking for a third-party evaluation? What, are, are you saying the third-party evaluation to maybe to work at a better way to provide special education? Is that what you're saying or?
That, that could be one opportunity, yeah. One opportunity where we could re-invite or to make sure that we're we're, we're diagnosing those needs correctly. We have every plan and step for that. We're also ensuring that, um, we're meeting our obligations for costs. That we're controlling our costs as absolute best we can. So we have a fiscally tight program to control that cost as much as possible, just because again. Seeing how much that's increasing year on year. Seems like progressively the way it's going, if it increased five or six percent in four years. At what point does the special ed budget consume fifty percent of the school budget? You, you know, you know, so I, I, I just conserving that aspect of it and, and, and maybe that's way out of line where it probably will never get to fifty percent and I would assume it probably never would. But, I mean, just looking at trends and, and thought processes that way, like, I just wanna know if we've if there's a way to have it reevaluated, just to give mindset to everybody, because anyone who looks at the budget sees special ed growing year on year on year. I'm sure I can't be the only one that's a little concerned with just the increase of it. And I get, and I get it, some of it's just what it is.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so there are a couple of drivers, uh, with special ed that we're seeing and not just in Hinsdale, but in uh, districts across not only just our state, but in our region. The number of students who are coming to us, either not prepared to learn. Having specific issues relative around occupational therapy or speech and language pathology. Uh, and then the increase in, in the overall number of students who are demonstrating behavior that's not socially acceptable to the point where they're becoming violent in the classroom. And they're hitting and striking teachers. Those are driving the major increases in our special education budget, as is the inability to hire our own full-time related service providers. So people who work in special ed. And deliver the service directly to our, our students. We have to go outside to private companies who have hired all of the public service providers away. Pay them a higher wage and then charge us a higher amount as well. So a couple of things that we can do. The first is, I think, um, April spoke to it earlier about uh, working with other superintendents to establish a regional special education collaborative where six or seven superintendents have expressed interest at our invitation to come together and talk about how can we pull together a center where we can share costs. Compare notes and cut down perhaps on, uh, transportation out of district placement. And essentially almost lease services from the professionals that we hire to work at those collaboratives. The other piece is, to your point, is to conduct a special education audit, which we're actually doing right now in Winchester. And the point of the audit is to look soup to nuts at the program. And determine if we're doing everything that we need to do within our multi-tiered system of support in classrooms prior to a student becoming referred. So I think that really touches your request for some type of thirty, third-party review. Where someone can look at how are we referring students into services? And are we doing everything that we can in the classroom? To prevent students to get more into the more expensive route of an IEP-driven education. Uh, that would be how I would explain it. I don't know, Patty, if you wanna add to that since you live in that Foxville every day.
I, I think you did a great explanation. The only thing I would add is that, um, you know, we've it's all over the news about the, kind of the acuity of a student now is very different than it was even five years ago. You know, the, the intensity of, you know, kind of like what Dr. Ryan was saying, the intensity of, of a student is, is higher. And then we're all, you know, there is, you know, um, the commissioner of New Hampshire has talked about that special ed, like particularly special ed aid, which is a reimbursement for, and a revenue that we have might be going down. Um, so that's something that might happen to in the future, but we don't know exactly how that's gonna happen with the new administration.
Yeah, I have one comment I'd love to make. Is there any thought to a collaborative group? To bring some pressure to our congressmen and senators that the state and the, at the state and federal level, they're cramming this down our throat. What is, is there any idea, any thought for, uh, a collaborative group to start pushing this? To try and get them to focus a little more on stopping their unfunded mandates and maybe freeing up a little money that this country throws away and help the people in this country. Would make more sense to me than for the different districts and communities to continue to pay for unfunded mandates.
Yeah, so, uh, it's a great question in terms of, um, if you're talking about overall. Uh, an overall group that's trying to force the hand of the legislature to eliminate the gap between the revenue we need and the, the expense that they're making. It, it, I haven't worked on the commission to study school funding. The issue isn't revenue in our state. The issue is how they distribute it. And where they wanna put the money as opposed, it's all about competing priorities. So, um, I know that Superintendent's Association, the Principals Association, they're backed by funding from uh, some nonprofit agencies. There are a couple of education nonprofit agencies that are pushing for the legislature to change the funding mechanism as well. I think right now it's an uphill battle. I served on that commission with, uh, Jay Khan, who's the mayor of Keene, and he and I met a couple of weeks ago to, to talk through some of the funding issues. And he said, right now, we're probably gonna be looking more at universal uh, voucher, of universal voucher system in the state. Because of the way that the, the, the political scenery has shifted. So that's gonna be an ongoing battle, but it's gonna be a lot tougher now than it was even a year or two ago. And Patty, I'm, I'm sorry, I stepped on you.
Well, you know, I was in the water and sewer industry for thirty-four years and when the state and the feds would come and start pushing on us. We pushed back, but we had a lot of people that was helping us push. I don't know, I don't know the amount of people that are concerned enough to get together and, I mean, really push.
I do.
That's my thing. A squeaky bearing gets the grease.
I do know that, 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 um, a lot of the state associations, the, you know, my association, which is the New Hampshire Association of Special Ed Administrators, the New Hampshire Association of Principals, the New Hampshire Association of School Board and the New, New Hampshire Association of School Administrators. I think I got them all. They have been doing a lot of legislative, um. Pushing, uh, for the last few years. And, um, I know, you know, my association, the Special Ed Administrators, you know, there, we have a, we have a legislative committee that goes to, that goes and talks to the legislation and all the time. Um, and it's, it's an extremely active, um, committee that, that we have for my association and we connect up. And we also connect up with PIC. That, you know, there's a couple, you know, uh, DC, you know, I'm on a committee with DC, with DHHS and DCYF to see if we can talk about, I know, so I know there's a lot of kind of backdoor things that were, that a lot of people are trying to do and some people are up in front of it, but kind of like what Dr. Ryan was saying. Is that thing, you know, kind of the environment has changed significantly even over a year.
Well, I just, I just would like to say if, if there is some way that maybe the town or the budget committee or some of the town groups can get together to, um, maybe help in some way. I can't see how it would hurt, seeing that so many people are concerned about this level of spending. If there's anything that I can do as chairman of the budget committee, I would be very open to help.
I mean, you can always write letters to the representatives and the Congressmen and us. All those people, the governor, all that stuff. I know I do it all the time on my own.
We could put the info out there for people.
I just. The, the grassroots thing, I think, is, is probably the answer more than anything to fix it, because when I was on the school board, they'd throw something down and I would get frustrated. Because like the SAU, like, oh, this is what we gotta do now. Well. If you don't agree with it, just because it's someone's brilliant idea, doesn't mean it's the right idea. So if you don't agree with it. As a group, everybody just saying no. And then make them go back and write something that works. You just don't have to take it on the chin, is my opinion on it. You know what I mean? Just if everyone is screaming that this is not the right direction. Then they have to go, someone's fields will get hurt and conquered, but they're gonna have to deal with their egos getting bruised and write something that works.
Unfortunately, education has become very political. But it is.
Yeah.
And it's down party lines and it's contentious and, and there's all sorts of lies about who's doing what.
No.
Whatever.
Everybody's worried about, oh, you're hurting the kids.
Right.
Well, you know, that, that's been played out just too damn much.
So just to, to add to that or a little bit more information on that, Patty, I think you could probably answer. I think we answered this last year or the year before. Do you know the number or percentage of students that we have approximate that are in the the SPED program, special ed program versus other local area schools? Do you know those numbers? I know, last time I thought I heard, I thought we're a little bit higher than surrounding districts as far as qualified students.
Um, I don't have the, the area districts, um, and this, and what my, what my statistics are from ten twenty-four. Um, and we are actually down, uh, in, in Hinsdale to twenty-point-eight uh, percent of students. Um, I can get that information from area, just from the DOE. I can get that information from area schools, but I do not have that right now.
Okay, I, I would, I would love to just, I would like to see that information. I'd love to. Um, I don't know if that would just be in one of your normal reports. You provide for the school boards, but I think that would just be good information to see.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so, but we're looking at about one out of every five.
Yeah.
What is the whole number? One out of every five kids is down?
I, I will say that that was down since, uh, last year, I believe it was at twenty-seven-point-three. So, uh, it has gone down.
Is that based on IEPs?
That, that, these are the students with IEPs.
So that doesn't, huh, correlate to?
No.
Okay.
Correlate to what?
An actual need. Sometimes it's just a parent knowing how to get it, right?
Um, no, I.
Well, I know, but there was, I can't remember, who was her name? I ain't gonna say it out loud, but. New Lady in Town, if you, years ago, if you wanted your, your child to be on an IEP, she knew how to do it. She'd help you get it done. She knew the process. So if you know the process, political like anything else. I don't always know. That's why you guys wanna revisit some of these, right?
Well, the evaluation process is pretty extensive and they have to redo it so many years, really. Kids don't need services. They come right off.
Yeah, we, we have to do, we have to reevaluate students every three years. And when, and every time, every time that is done, either by a referral or at the three-year evaluation, there are, um. Exact state, kind of state, federal criteria that they have to meet. And we have, I have a basically a determination form for every disability that, uh, somebody can be found with. And, you know, we've, we've if they don't meet, then we say that they don't meet, sometimes to the dismay of the parent, to be honest.
Hey, well, thank you.
Uh, curious to know how many students are in the ELO and where did the rest of the budget go?
Hi Karen, I knew you were gonna ask this question.
Oh, come on.
Uh, we have about eighteen kids doing ELOs. Some, we're pushing it down to the middle school now, so we'll, uh, we just started with, uh, a couple of middle schoolers, one particular. We're starting to allow students that are doing, um, four-H experiences and things like that to do, uh, those kind of experiences to count as ELOs also. Um, and we're hoping that they'll be able to get one elective credit for high school. So that doesn't count our middle school kid, uh, our middle school students, but that's where we're at with, um, nine through twelve.
How many kids are enrolled in it, Karen?
About, about eighteen. There's one student that is awaiting placement. Well, two students that are awaiting placement right now, a place. One had a placement and uh, it didn't work out, so not because of her, but because of the site. So we're looking for a new placement for her. Um, and so we're still waiting on one spot for another student.
Okay, thank you.
And then the other part of the question, Karen, was, um, who's doing it and where is it stuck in the budget?
So I do it. Uh, it, I do the work. Um, we do have two teachers that help oversee kids, so there's no budget attached to them. It's, uh, they do it, um, as part of their, that one teacher does it just because he loves overseeing ELOs. And the only other budget line we have attached to it would be the van driver. Um, and then the supply line, which I believe is three thousand dollars. Um, and then the supply line, which I believe is three thousand dollars this year. Although we don't even, because of the OSTCP grant, we typically don't have to use all that. I try to use the OSTCP money, but that grant's going away. So I don't want to be in that space where, um, we take the money out of the general budget. You know, we went through that and we, you know, I want to be able to leave that there. So when we don't have the OSTCP anymore, which will be next year, we, we'll still have that line in there with some money in it for our, um, you know, our, our, our activities like exhibition day, mentor dinner, those kind of things.
Yeah, because there's a thousand in there, took two thousand away for this coming year.
Yeah, we lowered it down because, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll have the grant next year too, so I can use that.
Anybody else in the budget committee have any comments?
Good.
Well, Dan said, go back to page two, so.
What do you think about that?
Well, I don't think so.
I don't like page two. If you go back, if you go back to page two.
Okay.
Other purchase services.
Yeah.
On page two.
Yeah. I knew you guys were going to do it. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't like this.
Would you like an answer?
Well, I, I just, I'm going to bring up what I'm looking at and then maybe it'll send you the direct, send you in the direction that of confusion. Uh, on the proposed budget from, that we're currently working in, this is from last year's paperwork that you gave us, other purchase services were one point nine million, you know, twenty-two, four twenty-nine. And this year it's twenty-two, or two point two million, six thirty-three twenty-six, which is up three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And I know that we, we talked about the, um, psychological services, and that's a hundred grand or something of that, I'm sure, of the other purchase services. But in the, in the grand scheme of things, generally if we're purchasing outside services, we should see a reduction somewhere else. So maybe just a little better explanation of the three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand increase on the purchase services.
You do have a reduction in some lines on that because, um, we were, well, it's been back and forth on doing some OT services. We were purchasing outside, then we hired inside. And then we're purchasing outside again for the current year, but at much fewer hours and a lower cost. You've got some negatives. But those other purchase services include your busing contract, you're out of district student. So that's where a lot of your costs are, are wrapped up in those two numbers. Then add in the SRO. So we actually did decrease some numbers there. But then we had those large increases that you kind of, you see in front of you with, um, busing and uh, out of district placements and, um, like psychology. The psychologist, we, we've kind of wanted to have it as an employee, but we've been unable to find it. And so right now it's being budgeted as a purchase service.
All tried to exhaust our, our.
I'll just clarify this for everybody, that the, the reduction lines that Jane's talking about was a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars plus reduction from the proposed budget from last year that we're working in now. The increases were the wages and the benefits and, you know, the professional services and, and the other purchase services. Just to clarify what, what we're looking at here. So there was some reductions here. Just to, yeah, clarify it.
I guess I'll, I'll kick the horse hard.
Yeah.
You know, last year we came in, we asked the, the, about the budget. Obviously this thing is way better than it ever has been. I have no complaints about that. The only issues that I kind of have really, um, is the fact that we're right a little above where we started last year before we started chopping things. So we knocked like two hundred and fifty thousand off at town meeting, asked, bring it down to two hundred and fifty thousand. And on top of that, the excess money that was left over at the end of the year, um, was close to a million dollars. Um, but wasn't all turned back, but some of it was obviously to help offset taxes. I guess my biggest thing, and I'll put it right out, is just being the best that we can be for all of us. And I realized with salaries, benefits, all of that, that plays in. And we don't have control over that retirement system. We don't have control over that. I think when it comes down to it, there's a little more gristle here that overall we could probably chew off and come to an agreement. And that's what I'm looking for.
So when we went through this budget as a, as a school board.
Yep.
We nickled the dime.
I'm not saying you didn't.
At this point, we've had so many, so many things that we couldn't control that were, that sent us way over. I mean, it, this budget started it like over almost a four percent increase. We've got it down to round two. Now, we had it under two. And then somebody selected their insurance and then pushed us over. But anyway, um, so at this point, we've reduced everything we could. I know we say, I know this has been said before, but I, we really have gone through it line by line, taken it all apart and taken everything that we could take out, out. And if we have to reduce any more of this budget, it's going to cost somebody their job. That's where we're at at this point. We tried not to do that. We did, we did, we did reduce a couple of people out of the budget.
There were positions that.
Right, there weren't being filled and. And we, uh, and so we decided not to fill them and, and just deal with what we're dealing with. There's a I feel like, in my opinion, and I won't be so forward on this, in my opinion, we got to get through this year, right? Because hopefully next year we'll have other, other things going on that'll also reduce this budget that we don't have this year.
We definitely will because of the loans we'll also have.
So we'll have the loan. Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be down, their revenue part of that will also be down. The, I mean, we're all hoping we get Winchester kids, you know? We're all, we're also talking about the, the merging of the Winchester and then Hinsdale, um, SAU services. So that'll help reduce that. That's all stuff that we can't do now, you know what I mean?
But this is stuff Dr. Ryan is actually getting, like, we're already sharing IT.
Yeah, and Winchester has a contract with Keene, they can't get it until the end of twenty twenty-seven year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight or twenty-six.
I thought it was twenty-six.
Six twenty-seven. So they're with Keene until then regardless. So they can't, so they're going in March to vote on their anchor school. They're narrowing it, they haven't, they haven't done it yet, but they're close to narrowing it down to two options. Hopefully we're one of them. And hopefully the Winchester will vote us as their anchor school and, and we'll get their kids. Um, will we have an increase with that? Yeah, we'll have to hire some people in order to cover that, depending on how it, how it transitions into the, our school. We don't know that either, that's a key issue with the Winchester, they have to figure that out. But there's a lot at play, so there's a lot going on and just know that we're looking at everything we can do to save the taxpayers money. We're looking at everything that we could bring in extra money from grants, from everything. And we really looked at this budget, so.
Have cut some things that I'm sure our teachers are not happy about. We've, you know, supplies, we pretty much said we're not getting new books, we're not getting new anything. We're, they've got to deal with what they have. We flatlined, like, we really, we went line item and if it was, you know, a thousand dollars, well, that's a thousand dollars taken.
Yeah.
We really did comb.
I just, with the position that was left out, salary and benefits.
I know that's.
So you're pretty close to three percent now, right? Without negotiation being final. So what, like, one percent of the teacher's bottom line salary, what does that add to your budget? Does that equal out to about, you know, a half a percent of the budget?
I wouldn't even hazard a guess at this point.
Well, I'm just, oh, there's a, there's a grant total number right here.
Based on what they're being paid down.
Yeah, the total, take your grand total of the teacher's salaries, one percent of that equals.
Well, if you figure you're, right now, you're at, uh, one percent of your total budget would be a hundred and thirty thousand. That doesn't leave a lot of room for teacher increases, considering I think your lowest increase on your teacher contract was a hundred and thirty-five thousand four years ago. Or three years ago now. So, and then that went up from there.
So we're looking at potentially over five percent increase in this budget on the low end. Right, so I just want everybody to be. So, that's all. We talked about how much we're whacking away, but.
Can I also just make a quick clarification, Dennis? Um, the comment that, um, Mike, um, we didn't return off most a million, we returned six hundred and ninety-five thousand. So I, I don't want people to think that's all money we did not spend in the budget, because that's not accurate. Two hundred, about two hundred and ten thousand was an error that I found back in previous years that the auditors made an adjustment to. So that threw that money back, um, for us to return to the taxpayers. And then, um, we had, I want to say about a hundred and, I'm guessing here, I want to say a hundred and seventy-five of that was excess revenue. So it's not all unexpended funds. So I just, I want to be cautious in thinking that we just didn't spend it all. We, we asked for so much that we didn't spend. I, I just want to clarify that a little bit. And I can, um, on that worksheet that I did that shows you what's left over, I can add, I think, in fact, I actually did have it, but I took it out because I didn't want to confuse. But I can add that in there just because it, it does worry me when people think, well, yeah, six hundred and ninety-five, you didn't spend. You know, I, I just want people to know there's, there's more to that factor than just, um, your, your expenditures not being used.
I get that, I get that portion of it totally. Um, but it's six ninety-five plus two fifty, um, now you're talking close to a million.
Uh, two fifty.
Closer.
The two fifty was included.
That's included in there.
Yeah. No, it was included in the six.
Yeah, so that's reducing, instead, you're not adding that, that's in, that six ninety-five we turned back. She had found a mistake that hadn't been made. Not, not that she. Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand.
Right.
Yeah, about two hundred and eight thousand, yep. Yeah, so you take that off and then you take about a hundred and seventy-five of excess revenue off. So you're, you're coming down into the three hundreds more than, you know, a six ninety-five.
I also need to advocate for special ed because we work really hard in reference to getting revenue from special ed aid and also Medicaid. Um, we do a lot of work to try to get that revenue. We have, you know, so that's revenue from special ed.
You all set, Mike? Anybody else? I'm just going to say one thing, you guys did a hell of a job cutting this budget. The thing that I'm concerned about, are you going to be able to hold that line in the future? Is it going to be that you cut so much that in a year or two, you're going to have to put the majority of that back?
Will we get Winchester kids when they?
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, don't cut, you know, while we say, you know, we want you to cut, but we don't want you to cut your throat either.
Yeah, we're, I think we're kind of right there.
Well.
We're advancing that line right now.
But that is what is asked most of the time. That is what you guys ask.
Can I ask this? I mean, if we're bringing Winchester in, obviously we're going to be splitting the cost, but it's still going to cost us more in the long.
They're going to pay tuition to kids. So.
Whatever, it's part of our facility, staffing.
Staffing, yeah, because we'll have.
Do we have a role for however many kids they have?
Yes, yes.
Really, Michael?
Well, we're looking at.
The graduating class last year was only twenty-something kids.
And it gets thirty-two this year.
Like, we don't, yeah.
There's thirty-two this year.
Thirty-two this year?
Yeah, it's going up, there's a trend.
And they're one of the biggest classes, we, they used to be like fifty-eight.
I was, I was the class.
April, I'm sorry, what's the lowest level we've done for years?
Class-wise, we've got that bubble, because Chase is in that bubble of the bigger classes.
I don't want to be the devil's advocate either, but still. Placement. Where, where Hinsdale is in reference to the rest of the state. Okay, we're not in the best of spot. I just think, this is my opinion, I'm not trying to take away anything from anybody. When you do a better job, you get paid back. Just. Something like. All I got to say.
Well, tests can't show it when you're, when you're testing special ed children on a regular level. They're going to bring our, our levels down. And you just saw how big our special ed is.
It doesn't count for their grade either, they do state testing and they know that. I've seen kids quit, 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 the second it turns green, they know they can hit next. Like, you know, it's, so it is, and some of the teachers really do add the kids up and they want to see their scores do better. They think especially at high school, they're like, you cannot get me up for this test, they don't care.
What's the, what's the, like, temperature of the negotiations with the teachers? Is, are they, there must be some kind of an idea, you know? Well, that's why I'm saying, what's the temperature? Is it?
I mean, we're in negotiations, that's about all I can say about it.
Dan. My worry or concern about, I'm, I'm all for bringing kids in, right? But here's my worry is you're, you're competing against other towns that want their kids too. To get some kind of bidding war to where now, well, we, I can do a cheaper than that. Now all of a sudden it's costing us money to bring the kids in. Just, you've got, you guys got to pick a number that's reasonable for the town, that works for everybody. And that's got to be the bottom line, in my opinion.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
And it won't be us making that decision. There's going to be a, a whole committee that's going to be put together to actually put, and, and there's a lead time on that. You know, I mean, and it's, it is very important that we don't make this cost us more money.
That's right.
We don't need any more.
No, no, we do not need any, we need it to be a, a positive, but I've also been pushing to the point where I think they get sick of hearing me say it, is that we cannot die on the hill of if we do Winchester. We need to take care of us first.
Well, we do have the loan, that's almost a million dollars coming off our budget.
But it's only a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar swing because of the four hundred thousand dollars of revenue that comes in.
It's an overall reduction in overall.
Yeah, so overall, in the big number, but.
Right, that's what I.
But the taxpayer's obligation's only two fifty.
Yeah.
But we got to raise, I, I was, maybe I'm wrong. I always thought we had to raise that money. And then we got reimbursed money after we made a payment from the state. I don't think, does it come, does it come before?
What money are you talking about? I'm sorry.
Bonding, the bond.
Oh, well, the bond, um, what, what happens is you, you, old way and new way. Um, you guys are still under the old way, which, um, your payments that you make were aligned with the money you received in building aid. So next year or two, twenty-six, twenty-seven, you'll no longer be paying the bonds, but you'll no longer be getting building aid. And I do have, I do have a document for you guys that I worked on Friday for you.
Yes, but is that a, my question is, is that a, a true reimbursement? We raise the money, make the payment, the state gives us the money, reimburses the money afterwards? Or do we get that money ahead of time?
Nope, you're getting it at the same time. Um, now, what they do is they do it upfront. But under the, the older way, before all these new changes, it was, it, it came at the same time.
So like for the elementary school.
So we still raise the money then?
That's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we raise the money in taxes.
But you get it on the other side.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So we won't be raising that six hundred thousand dollars initially.
The elementary school, we lucked out, that the state paid their junk. So we just had to take.
Yeah. Okay.
Just so you know, the, the building aid is four hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and three dollars that we've been getting to offset what we've been paying for bond and bond interest. Hi.
Can I just add one thing that I, I, Kayla, you, 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 I think you said very well that, you know, you've witnessed some, a lot of kids. that, you know, you've witnessed some, a lot of kids just, as soon as they get to the state testing, click, 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 click. I think as a committee, I think what, one of the things that you can help with the school is encourage everyone to take those tests seriously. Um, and, you know, make it, make it count because I do think that there are a lot of kids that do click and that, that affects our test scores and it affects the, the appeal of Hinsdale.
And the perception of how.
Yeah.
Do they test a lot more than we used to?
Yeah.
Oh, God, yeah.
Just not testing us three times a year.
And unfortunately, the ones that just click, 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 count too, huh?
All of them.
Everything, yes.
No, we're not doing.
And, and a lot of those are not the special ed kids.
Correct.
Really, those are the kids that are sitting there and they don't, they get good grades, they get all this, maybe what does this count towards anything? So they just.
And a lot of our students receive special services. A lot of times they have support during those tests. So they might not have, they don't have the options like, no, 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 we're going to slow down. So actually, they.
They give us our best scores.
Yeah.
So, great.
Here's a, here's a rhetorical question then to that, is why are our students attacking those tests differently than other schools?
That's a good question.
And I'm sure that's, again, that's a rhetorical question. I'm sure the school board is looking at it and trying to figure out many challenges or many solutions to this challenge, but you know, it definitely sounds like that's a challenge that you guys are facing an uphill battle on.
And I don't know what year those, Patty, what year are our scores going off of for like nationwide?
I think it's, I think it offsets by one, by one year. So it's like, yeah. I, it, it might be too, I'm not one, Dr. Ryan, might, you, you might know that better.
In terms of score comparisons, Patty?
Yes.
So we only have, uh, we just received last year's
Right.
score results, right? And we showed them to the board. I mean, we presented that to the board, I think, at our November meeting. Uh, I think if we were to compare those statewide, um, we're definitely in the lower fiftieth percent. Uh, but there are other districts that certainly performed far worse than, than, than our students did. Uh, we certainly have a lot of room to grow in the area of the Hampshire SAS, but at the junior level, remember they take the SAT. Where before they used to take the kneecap, which was a state, state-aligned or curriculum-aligned assessment. So it's just grades three through eight, and we're still seeing some of the after effects of COVID coming through um, pretty much our sixth, seventh and eighth graders. Uh, so we won't see that iron out for a couple of years. I know Dr. Bremner and her staff are doing a ton of work to try to resolve that.
But no, I'll say one thing. The next time I talk to somebody, I'll have a little bit of extra information to give them when they say, well, you want to fund the school, look where our kids at.
Tell them to go up to pre-reduced level.
You know?
That's right.
Application.
Well, you know, the, the majority of people don't have any clue of that. And I had no idea of that until tonight.
Well, we do have good things happening here. REO programs then acknowledged at state level and
Yeah.
we've got teachers trying to do innovative things with our kids. There are good things happening. You just don't hear about them.
Introduce multi-tiered systems of support, which is one method that is research-based to reduce special education referrals and length of support. So um, we think about this, yes, for reading, but we also think about this for math and social emotional learning so that we think our, our regular milieu, our, our everybody, what they get at the tier one level in the class is higher quality and making sure we're continuing to increase that quality and including as many kids as we can in there, and then a little more specialization and a little more specialization. And making sure that these systems align. And that's something that we really introduced this year in August. Um, and so we're really pulling together all of these systems in a new way to encapsulate all of the things you're talking about, better scores, lower special referral, all that.
Behavioral issues dropping.
Kind of a percentage of people that just clicked the test right?
Some, some of them for certain tests, not, not the state test, but for maps and we have um, other, at the elementary school, we have a few other literacy tests we do. Um, it'll flag it for us. And so for um, maps testing, NWEA testing, that's one that we use to indicate to predict how kids will do on the SAS. And if it flags, then we sit, we have a conversation. So we reset them. Um, so that's a test that we use to indicate how they'll do on the SAS.
Okay.
Day of, they're going to do what they're going to do, but we can do a better job at, at hitting it. And so we've addressed it. If we can tell that they've clicked through, then we talk with that kid and we talk about it at parent-teacher conference.
A little less tested, a little more learned.
I can remember a couple of the teachers just hit him over the hands of rule when you weren't a good kid.
Yeah, we're not going that direction.
Lot more in the ruler.
Jane.
Are you committee got anything else?
Karen had a question.
Karen, you have a question?
No, I don't have a question.
Karen?
Wayne's got one.
No, and I want to say this not as a budget person. I want to say this as a taxpayer. Okay? You guys have done a wonderful job last two years. This budget's been amazing. But as I sit here and as a parent that has had kids go through the school system, blah, blah, blah. Um, I'll be honest, the tech person, when that third person was hired, I was totally against it. We have two small schools. We don't need all that help. Okay, so you've proven my point in a way because Justin is going to Winchester. Part-time, whatever, we're setting. All right, so we've got these full-time people, private stuff, but now we can do this. We have a curriculum person. I guess I sort of, I don't know who I would see. I would like to sort of know what they really do and their job description because I remember back eighteen years ago when Helen I think was, you know, did a wonderful job. Oh, we don't need that position anymore. Oh, let's bring it back. And then we've got that. And now we have a co, and I'm just not picking on them. I'm just saying that we can't touch the special ed. We brought these new positions back in and, you know, yes, maybe they're doing wonderful, but are they doing with us being so small, are they doing? I'm not saying we're not doing a good job, but do we need them full-time? Can we share them with Winchester? You know what I'm saying? And, and whether you guys are looking that. But I'm just thinking of these positions that are out here and we've been on the budget committee and sort of know. I'm just saying to take a closer look at some of these positions that we're paying mega bucks for. And we have a small school, small schools. I just, I don't agree as a taxpayer that these, all these positions need to be. We don't want to let teachers go because you don't know what's going to happen here. Do we have five kids in the high school classroom this period? Do we have six of them at this period? So we're paying someone seventy thousand a year to teach three classes of fifteen kids. You know what I'm saying? And I don't want to touch the teachers and I don't want to touch the special ed. But I'm just saying all this extra that's out here, do we really need it?
So the four or five kids in a class are usually eighty classes. We've already revamped that system.
Right, but I'm just saying as knowing last year.
There is restructuring happening. Um, Karen is now also helping out with guidance and so they're definitely looking at how, what each person does and how can we make it happen more efficiently. That's been one of Dr. Ryan's biggest charges. He's looking at how the middle school functions. We do know this is not sustainable and something needs to change. We're, and we've all, I think, been on that horse, especially this year. And there is a lot of work going on, Dr. Ryan. It's really working to try to make things happen more efficiently and not like obviously you can't.
Right, right, yeah. No, but I'm just saying as a.
That all makes sense, right? Because think the world of Karen, but eighteen kids versus what she costs.
Right, and that's.
Tough to swallow, right?
She's also doing stuff at the elementary school now. She's working with guidance. She, because, you know, some of our kids don't really have a path. What am I going to do? I don't know. And we want them to have a goal and whatever that may be. Obviously, it's not college for a lot of kids now. And so she's working, you know, K all the way up on career stuff now.
Which is the trades are huge again, right? Everyone.
And trying to amp that up. And how can we get, and we can't have a shop class, but can we get our kids those experiences?
We have a bike shop.
That's true.
We have a bike shop.
Well, that's a, that's a step in the right direction. And also, I, I say to people all the time because people take per, take things personally so easily. And this is not personal, it's business. You know, I always make sure that everybody hears that from me. It's not personal business. Everybody in this town is taxpayer dollars and they look for us to use as a little bit of it as we can. So I know I've had arguments. I know I have people that are upset with me because they take it personally, but it is not, it is not to anybody personally. You know, like some of these guys are, they're pretty good. Hey, oh, you, yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, uh, I know as of right now, we, we were told that the information can't be let out about how much, what percentage of government and, or state and federal um, grants and funding we're going to get. Do we know when we're going to get that number and where we're going to have the um, impact of what the taxpayers' obligation is going to be in the total budget compared to what's being covered by the state because that drastically swings our tax rate from year to year when they cut funding and when they increase funding.
When, usually we know by February, right, Jane?
Yeah, I already have um, revenue worksheets um, done up. So like, I already have, here's your twenty-five, twenty-six, but because I've been kind of waiting, um, and again, because I heard a one point nine million dollar number, which is so false. Um, and nobody talked to me about that number as I talked to you guys about. Um, I'm making it sure it's very bold. What's unknown at this point, which I did last year too. But um, I do have these numbers for you and I'm just waiting to get the final on the tax rate to do an estimated one as well, which, you know, I, I can't do anything about the teacher's contract yet to give you an estimate, but as soon as I get that, I'll give it to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What do you want to make?
Should, should we uh, discuss a follow-up meeting to get some corrected numbers?
Yeah.
I'm thinking it probably wouldn't be a bad thing, maybe the first part of January.
No. What does everybody think? Come on, budget guys.
I'm game ready, man. You want to have, I want to talk about budgets all the time.
Your phone ringing you up?
Yeah.
I think we're in pretty good shape as a budget committee.
Yeah.
Time-wise and what we have for municipal and school stuff in front of us.
Are we meeting on the eighteenth?
Nineteenth, I have the nineteenth.
Oh, it's Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, the third Wednesday is the eighteenth.
Yes.
Thursday.
That was later too, right? Six thirty or?
Yeah.
Six.
Six, 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 nine, six, nine.
Yeah.
Six, nine, nineteen.
But that's the, that's the meeting with the department.
Do you want to wait till after that meeting and we'll set one?
Well, that's what I'm saying for the school to meet jointly with the school again.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Set it now, we'll get some time.
Yeah.
Plan for it.
Whatever you want to do.
Okay.
One nights are usually good for, not the second Wednesday.
Right.
Well, no, Wednesday, we know Wednesday.
Just pick it in, I'll tell you.
I was going to say in dark.
Right?
Budget hearing should be the first part of February.
Yes.
And if, and if we were to meet the week before the budget hearing, I think we could probably hire things out by then.
You know? I think we should have one sooner than that.
Just for the school though, I'm talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, but do we want to wait that long? I don't think we should. I think we should do something.
Around the week of the thirteenth of January?
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
That would be better.
So just to ask the question, we can, like I said, I'm game. Anytime you guys want to go. But we still probably won't have the teacher's stuff done.
Hopefully you will.
Think you will?
After the eighth, do you think, after our meeting will? Yeah, I mean, hopefully.
Then the revenues that Wayne was just talking about. You put the teacher stuff on top of what you have.
Right.
Will that put us within a reasonable amount? We can be kind of comfortable about what we're talking about?
Be in a much better place then, well, but no.
So the thirteenth would be a good number then?
So the week of the day.
Week of the thirteen.
Yes.
Okay.
One day. One day is good for everybody.
Fifteen is good.
Fifteen is good.
Fifteen I have done as the committee meeting anyway.
Maria hasn't blown up by.
She said, she just said I'm about those.
I said before, when we did the town budget. We as a, should sit down and talk about.
Yeah, but we're meeting, we're meeting with the budget committee.
I don't want to.
No, no, we're meeting with the department head.
That's like a normal.
I think we need to do that before.
We're doing, we're doing that next year. But then with, I, like we did with that one, I think we should have a meeting between us with us along with, you know, and, and just go over it before.
Do you want to meet before we meet with the department head?
Just the budget committee?
Just the budget.
Committee?
Yes.
Okay, so. I don't think we need to.
If, if, is it, is it needed? That's the next thing.
We're still, we're still discussing it?
Can we take care of the school and then come back?
Yeah, we can, we can talk to the staff.
Make a motion. I have to, the meeting with the school on January fifteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five?
No.
I'll second.
Well, no, excuse me, we're going to.
Five thirty?
Well, well, thirty, well, by thirty. Are you meeting on the sixth? Okay. And then it's, are you guys meeting again?
Or there's six.
Five thirty?
I'll second.
I'm okay with five thirty.
Five thirty?
Does that work for, do you, are you going to, or?
At what time?
Five thirty.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
At six?
Up here?
Six o'clock.
That's what we're asking.
And where?
Here?
Yeah.
Definitely. So when is it?
Does that work for you, David and Ryan and Jane?
We don't know yet. We haven't.
It was five thirty on the.
Five thirty or six?
We're going to get it anyway.
Mike was still formulating his motion.
Yeah, one, 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 wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Fifteen.
Don't piss off the secretary.
I'm going to interrupt everybody, make a motion, January fifteenth, six o'clock here, meeting with the school board.
Six o'clock?
That was so good.
That was good, Mike.